All righty, folks. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on June 8? I have John and Dino. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Do we have any public comments on agenda items? Okay, and so then we move on to student government. Carolyn, this is it for you.
Yes, it is, unfortunately.
It's so sorry to see you go, but you know, so happy that you're going on to bigger and better things for yourself. What have you got for us?
Um, tonight, well, first and foremost, I just wanted to thank the board and all of you for inviting me to be here with you each and every meeting and listening to my reports. It was a big honor to be able to give the reports to everyone and I was, it was a really good experience. So I just want to thank you all for that. And then the main thing that I want to report on tonight is that our student government elections for the coming year have ended. And so we have a new set of officers that's going to be leading our student government in the coming year. And so with that, I want to introduce the new student government president for the 2021-2022 school year, who is our treasurer from this past year, Samson Wong. I've worked with Samson this past year. He's been a really, really great asset to our student government, and I can't wait to see what he does in the future. So Samson, if you want to just introduce yourself or just wave whatever is best for you, but he's also on the call right now.
Hi, so my name is Samson Wong and I'll be a junior next year. I really look forward to working with you guys and attending all the meetings.
Welcome.
Welcome, absolutely. You have some big shoes to fill, okay, because Carolyn, she did some big work for us here over the past year. And so we're looking forward to seeing what you have for us as the year progresses and, you know, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All righty, hey, Carolyn.
Thanks so much for having us and have a great summer, everyone.
You too.
Great job. We're really proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, and so now move on to the board president. First thing I would like to make mention of, you know, is that tonight is our final meeting for two of our longstanding and active board members, Christina Pierce and John Ronczuk are both attending their last meeting of the year and their last meetings, yeah. You know, and so John had stepped out and I remember my first, the first meeting I came into was with, was with John actually, because I came in to fill in a vacancy that had been made, you know, early on. And so I sat down next to John and I really, you know, that was when I learned that you need to raise your hand and, you know, and make a motion for every, every, every resolution, because it's kind of, you know, like frustrating when nobody makes a motion and you're just kind of sitting there waiting and waiting. And, and John, that first meeting that I was at, you know, John, you just raised your hand every single time and I'm like, oh, that's how you do this. And I heard him make like smart and thoughtful remarks during that meeting and I was looking forward to working with him, only to find out that he was going to be gone from that point on, because that was his last, last meeting too. And so clearly, you know, John has served admirably for the last, was it three or four years as vice president? No, you were three, yeah. And I remember watching you doing the first time that you sat in for the show and, you know, it was, it was. And it was, it was always an honor and a pleasure working with you. And so I really appreciate everything you do with us here.
Thanks, Mario. And I just wanted to take a minute to recognize all the people I've had a chance to work with. Some of them are on the TV, some of them, you know, have come off the board over the years. I look back on the experience, it's been unbelievable. I learned a lot. I tell people on the outside, other parents, that if you really want to see how complex an organization manages stakeholders and policy and, you know, regulations and personalities, it's been such an eye-opening journey. And I appreciate Mario stepping up. I think, you know, to all the board members, you all step up, you all volunteer. It's not for the paycheck, I know that. And I mostly, most of all, I've enjoyed the friendships I've made. You know, I'm not going anywhere. I still live in Vestal. I hope to see you all out in town. I look forward to graduation. I look forward to the senior car parade. And then I won't be far, so thank you very much.
Thanks, John. And Christina, you know, I just want to let you know that we spent a few years here together and what you have demonstrated over the last year, the amount of courage that you displayed, expressing yourself and sharing your strong feelings the way that you did. I've always admired that about you. And I just wanted to let you know that it's, it's been an honor to have served with you in this capacity. I know that there have been times where, you know, things have not necessarily gone the way that you had wanted them to. And I'm sorry that we weren't always able to sit there and work, you know, in, in a way that was more enjoyable, I suppose, for lack of a better term. But I have always respected the way that you have approached these, these trying times and how much you spent time standing so strongly by your convictions. And I wanted to thank you for your service and I wanted to let you know how much I appreciated everything you've done.
Thank you, and I think I have to get close to my computer, so. Big face. I appreciate that, Mario. You and I have not always seen eye to eye, but I, I think that there's a mutual respect and I appreciate your words. Never expected what, what I got myself into in the last year, serving on the board. I thought it would be.
No one, no one here.
Not so much. But I appreciate, I think it's a board made up of a, a bunch of different perspectives and different opinions, and I really do appreciate that. I've tried to, to, like you said, Mario, stand by what I'm convicted of. And I think that everyone on the board has been respectful and we can have a difference of opinions and still act as a, as a unified board. And I think that's really important and really good for the district. So I've learned a tremendous amount about the inside, internal workings of the district and I have a great deal of respect for Jeff and Cliff and Matt and everybody on here and the whole team. Patrick, I wish you luck. I think you'll, I know you'll do a great job. And I look forward to seeing next year how we recover from the last 12 months or so. So thank you, everybody.
Hey, thanks, Christina.
Thanks.
And so now I move on to liaisons. Do I have any reports? John?
So I'm going to report on a few of the activities at the high school. I was able to help out for the, I'm leaving my part out just later, the after-prom party. The after-prom event. Yeah, I obviously have a student, my kid, in senior class, but it was just the amount of work and everyone was there with a smile. It was just great, you know, it's great to see kids interacting with staff. The way it was laid out, I thought it was very well put together. It was safe, it was late. I had, I had the 2:00 to 5:00 AM shift. It was fun. I signed up for it, but I just wanted to give a lot of credit to both staff and volunteers and the students that came and were very respectful of the rules. And in other words, I think everyone had a good time. As well as the prom, I got to see some of the students beforehand. And I heard a lot of good things and only good things about both events. So kudos to all. And I also like to mention, if you haven't noticed, the senior posters are up on the fence. Those were a donation from a couple of charitable companies. So at no cost to the district or the families, we were able to provide that again. And a set of volunteers, both Sunday organized the banners and yesterday put them up on the fence. So thank you. Go take a look at them. It's just impressive to see how many students are up there and to see all their faces together. It's really, it's really something to behold.
It's very nice. Nice job.
That's it for the, I believe, is on your board.
Well, then, thank you, John. And Tony, please.
Okay, at Vestal Hills, they're launching a Let's Talk Summer Wellness Family Toolkit. And in this toolkit, it contains gratitude calendar, kindness cards, and the big one, family wellness bingo. This was set up by the Mental Health Association of New York State. They also have a video for kindergarten registration. And just wanted to point out that the PTA there is very strong with 556 members, which I think is really good. The PTA is going to have a nature walk on Thursday, June 24th. And on Monday, already had happened this past Monday, the W group had their annual walk to school and it was enjoyed by all. While I'm here, I might as well talk about the second meeting of the Instructional Technology Strategic Committee, which we held our second meeting on 6/16 from 3:40 to 6:10. We finalized various matters that will be sent out in the future. And again, I was just impressed by Heather and Catherine, how they developed an agenda that was challenging and important to move ahead with a new vision statement that will positively affect how Vestal competes in the ever-changing world of technology. I want to stress the hard work all the people on the committee did. There was approximately 35 members of the committee. And, and last but not least, I'm very proud to say that with Heather's help, I, I learned how to use the chat icon on Zoom, so anything is possible.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All righty, folks. Any other, any other liaison report? All right, you know, I just, you know, to kind of piggyback a little bit on what John was talking about earlier, you know, it was probably about 11 o'clock on, on prom night that, that my wife and I kind of snuck on, you know, into the, onto the grounds over here and just drove around. And it was, it was awesome to see. There was a bunch of kids still out there. They were dancing. It was, they were wearing their, you know, their great prom, you know, gowns and, and suits. And they just looked fantastic and the weather was beautiful. It was just a gorgeous night. And so it was really, it was nice. It was a really nice event. And so I was really, you know, happy to see how things were kind of playing out. Okay, and so next is, we're going to be talking about the, the senior carpere. That'll be this coming Friday. I believe that it's at 5 is the parade event itself. I think it's 5 and they're going to be meeting at the 434, the 434 Sports Complex. That's, that'll be at like 4:30, I think, is when they're, you know, when they'll be, you know, getting themselves organized for the parade itself, for the 5 o'clock parade. You know, everyone is invited down. Will, you know, the board and the administration will probably be congregating over by the pavilion over the, over here at the end of Front Street. You know, that's where we were last year and, you know, that's where we'll, we'll stand by and, and wave to the folks. I'm lending out my car, so I won't be driving, but at least I'd be able to look at it. And so I'm really excited about this. You know, we had such an amazing time last year. It was, it was something we just kind of put together just as the, something that we could try to do, considering how things, how bad things had gone for us at the end of last year, only to find out that we just loved it. It was just such a, you know, an amazing event. It was so much fun watching the students driving by, the, all the sirens and the horns and all the, you know, the laughter. And I remember my wife throwing little ducks at all the kids and so. So I, she's going to, she's going to be coming up with new things to sit there and. But, you know, we'll leave that alone for right now. And so, and so the, the next thing we're going to be talking about is we, we have a tentative date, I think of August 8th for the board retreat. I'm sorry, August 3rd. So it'll be the first Monday, Tuesday of August.
Same day as the board meeting?
August 3rd is. Well, let me, let me confirm this now.
But we, I don't know that we have a schedule yet for the board meeting, so we've got it scheduled for August 3rd unless, unless everybody wants to change it, but.
So it's Tuesday, the 3rd is the tentative date that we, we have set up right now for the, for the board retreat. I guess we're not firm on it, but that's what we're.
We needed to find out, you know, is that date going to work?
You know, will that date work for, for the board members? So we have attendance. I think John said he won't be here for that, so.
Christina, are you.
Christina, you got to commit to that.
So, you know, we'll have some new folks, we'll be bringing in for that one. And so we're, we're going to be welcoming in at the next meeting. We'll be welcoming Eric Leclerc and Kathy Egan. They'll be our new, our new board members coming on. And Dino, congratulations on your second term that you'll be, you'll be starting at the next meeting. And so that'll be, that'll be a lovely thing. And so as it stands right now, we're tentatively shooting for August 3rd. You know, asking those who can confirm that date, you know, to let it, you know, to get back with us. Otherwise, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of see what we can make happen, you know, otherwise. And on that note, that is all that I have and I pass it on to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. And again, I want to say a special thanks to John and to Christina for your years of service here to the district. And you will be missed, so thank you. COVID numbers. I am really happy to be able to say that in the first time in 15 months that we have no students or staff in quarantine. So good news does come out of this, so. Our business update, I will turn it over to Mr. Cassin for a quick business update.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Aaron. So just as many of you know, Mark Burdo, who is our food service director through Broom Tagabosi, he's retiring at the end of this month. So we just received some communication here from Annie Hudok, who will be taking over as a food service director in July. So she wrote to us and just indicated that, as we know, this past school year, we were able to supply meals seven days a week. But there's new guidance from New York State, changing the maximum number of meals that can be distributed per week, and that is to five days a week. However, she did let us know that if districts have planned for distributing meals for seven days a week for the summer, then we can continue doing that. And that has been our plan that we had set up. But becoming the new school year, that will be a maximum of five days of meal distribution for students. So just so you're aware of that.
Cliff, I see the notice on YouTube. Is that still correct?
Thank you for that. So we're having difficulty with broadcasting on YouTube Live tonight. When I went to connect to it, it said that the parameters were not working. So that's why Matt and I had our screens off. We're trying to work on it. We contacted our IT folks. And the solution is that we are recording this meeting on the webinar, the Zoom webinar. And with that, we will upload it to YouTube tomorrow, so folks will be able to watch it on YouTube. But both links are on our website in the red banner at the very top, so if anyone does want to watch this board meeting tonight, they just get on that webinar, which we have, one, two, three, we have five people attending right now that are watching, plus everyone here is panelist. So, so it is out there for public, but it's just not on YouTube Live.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Also, just want to do a quick update with Capital Project. Basically, what's going to happen beginning Monday, the 28th, so when school's out, we're going to go full force into Capital Project. So here's just a little bit of the scope of what's going to happen. At African Road Middle School, they're going to take the pavement in front where the bus loops, where the buses pull up. That's going to be completely stripped, taken out and put in a whole new bus loop there. And also, they're going to outside, finish the AREE playground, or that has a few more pieces need to be added and some fencing that'll take place this summer. On the inside, the building, an awful lot happening. The technology rooms in the basement are being renovated with HVAC and flooring and ceiling. Everything is going to go in there. On the first floor, the whole main office area of the middle school is going to be gutted. Everything out of there and a whole new main office will be available and including all the offices for the counseling and the admin. All that'll be available at the end of August, so they're going to put a big rush on that. They also are finishing, finishing up some flooring in the hallways on the first floor. And on the second floor, they're doing some abatement on the hallway flooring. And they're going to be working in the AREE library and staff bathrooms. And then they're also going to be renovating rooms 229 through 238 at AREE and also upgrading some HVAC systems. So that's a lot of work that's happening for middle school. At Glenwood, abatement in the flooring in the south pods, that's going to take place. Upgrading all the HVAC systems in the four pods. And with that, there's ductwork going in the ceiling, so they're going to have to replace a lot of the ceilings that are happening there. Also, a main office window will be in place. It'll be rated, you know, for entry that people can't break through very easily. And then also the cafeteria HVAC system will be renovated there. At Glenwood, we're continuing to work in the basement. And as you know, in the basement, we're putting a lift in for ADA accessible. And then they're also creating the new art room and renovating the current music room there. So that, and they're also putting ADA equipment in the playground. At the high school, we are, they're going to grind all the corridor terrazzo. If you've ever been to high school, if you look down the hallway, it looks a little bumpy, but they're going to grind all that terrazzo down so it's nice and smooth. In the lecture hall, they're revamping lecture hall, all new seating, ceiling, painting, dealing with the floor and a whole new teacher station for that lecture hall room 260. In the art rooms and down on the first floor near the pool, they're abating the floors and are putting new casework in. And they're also installing in the locker rooms, four new gender-neutral restrooms that are in the locker room. And are also going to sand down the gym floor and put our new logo in an all-new striping and have it all look nice and fresh. And if you ever looked in that gym, the walls have been painted, the ductwork has been painted. It'll be beautiful at the end of the summer. They're also adding another science classroom. That's going to be where the existing English Resource Center is. So there's going to be a new science classroom there and they are adding a new office area for English folks. And that's down in the English wing. And then we're putting where they were on the second floor, we're going to put a new English Resource Center there for students. So all that's happening this summer at the high school. Vestal Hills, a lot of work going on in Vestal Hills. Abatement of the library floor and various areas in the ceiling to allow for ductwork and piping. They're renovating the library, computer lab and the maker space. Have you ever seen that? It's a large area. That's going to be all brand new at the end of the summer. Also, some HVAC upgrades are going on in the gym and they're adding some air conditioning to the data rack room, where all of our data and our network closet is for that whole building. They're renovating that area. And they're also taking out the lift in the front of that when you walk into school and it's going to be a ramp. They've had a lot of issues with the lift and it was recommended to create a ramp there instead of having that lift. And finally, for summer work here of Capital Project Transportation Building, they're getting new floors when you walk into the building. And also, they're going to do extensive, pardon me, extensive amount of electrical work in that building with removing, moving electrical panels and getting a lot up to compliance in that area. So it's a lot that's happening this summer, but just wanted to give you a quick update of what's going to take place. And I can also, I want to share my screen with you, just to show you what we have here. So as many of you have heard, you know, elementary, secondary school, emergency relief, the ESER, I'm sure you've heard about these terms, these acronyms. I just wanted to give you a quick update here on this. We will, at the next board meeting, go through exactly the funding, the funding amounts, and we'll show you how we're going to use these funds moving forward. But this is just a little precursor to that, just to show you what's going on and how this works. So the ESER is a U.S. Department of Education, they award some grants to what they call SEAs. And that really means Department Health, Department of, of Education at the state level. And then LEAs is the school districts within the state. So they're awarding grants to the Department of Education and then the Department of Education pushes those grants out to the school districts. So that basically, that's what that means. And it is under the ESEA, which began 1965. And the purpose of this is to address the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on schools across the nation. So if you look at this chart, there's three different areas under ESER. First is the CARES Act, then the CRSA Act and the ARP. So under the CARES Act, which was enacted in March 27th, so over a year ago, they have ESER funds and GIR funds. So I know this is a lot confused, I thought I'd throw this in a chart to show people how this works. And so the ESER, under the elementary, secondary school, emergency relief, they have some funds that are released, but it's under the CARES Act. And the GIR fund is a Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, where the governors have some opportunity then to supply these funds to where they think they should go. So, so the CARES Act is distributed through the ESER and the GIR funds to school districts. And then there's also the CRSA, which is the Coronavirus Response to Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And that has ESER II funds and GIR II funds. So these are additional funds that came about in December 27th, December 27th of 2020. And with that, then that will be given to school districts or has been given to school districts. And finally, in March 11th, just recently, we have the ESER III funds, which is the ARP, American Rescue Plan. So all of these funds will be coming to school districts. And like I said, I just wanted to give you an update of what all these terms mean. So when we talk about them at future board meetings, you kind of have an idea. So are any questions with any of that? It was kind of a, kind of fast, just, you know, but.
We'll, we'll send the same information out to the board members. District clerk can send them out on Friday. A lot of, a lot of new acronyms, a lot of information to get around. So we'll, we'll provide this to you so you can refer back to it when you need to. Yeah.
Are those, is that additive to the GIR money? Is that additive to state money?
For our state aid? It's, it's additional funds, yes, yes. You know, it's, it's, again, it's federal funds that have been, that's been distributed to the state level and they determine what school districts are getting. So Matt, Cliff and Patrick and various groups have been working on, you know, where we can best use those funds. It's student-based. You know, we'll spend it on students and professional development first after. Anything else, Cliff?
No, that concludes my report, but that leads right into Patrick, so.
All right, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Clark. Welcome again. And, you know, we'll turn it right over to you.
All right, thanks very much. So we're going to talk a little bit about instruction and where I think that we are heading, where we're hoping to head in the next stretch. So I call this From Recovery to Takeoff. And if you'll indulge me for just a little bit, I'd like to use the metaphor of mountain climbing to help us figure out where we've been and where we're going as an organization. For some of you may know, when I'm not at Vestal, one of the things I love is being outside and I think mountains have a, kind of a, there's a lot to learn from, from some of those journeys. So we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, where we were pre-pandemic. So we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, where we were pre-pandemic really quick. And what the vision has been for instruction prior to that. And then really hone in on how we can get back on track where we, you know, we're hoping to go before the pandemic hit. So. So here's the great range in the Adirondacks. I was up on a peak near this area about a month ago. You know, I think it always makes sense to start with the vision. Where are we going? Where are we hoping to end up? And as a district, we have some longstanding visioning that's, that's been in place. I think, you know, far longer than most of the folks that are on the board right now even. But it's always good to come back to these to ground us. Our district mission statement emphasizes that we want to create a, an educational environment that's challenging and caring and positive for all students. That concept of challenge comes back again in our district goals and also this idea of support. And so we're going to be talking about both of those things, both the challenge and support bit tonight. So we know where we want to go, right? We want education for students that's deep, that's going to make them think hard. It's going to expose them to lots of different ideas. And that's above all, going to get them excited about learning, right? Because we know that excited kids are going to tend to learn more. And, you know, along with that, we want teachers who are excited and engaged too, right? Because the passionate teacher is always going to figure out ways to go deeper and help students. And so this is not new, right? This is, this is things that we've been working on for a long time and pre-pandemic. You know, I feel, and I think a lot of folks in the organization felt like we were, we had a lot of good things in place. We were in some ways poised for a takeoff academically prior to the pandemic, you know? We've got a lot of different programs and things that we think about, you know, we're going on our trip. What do we need? Well, you know, these are just some examples of different curriculum initiatives and instructional initiatives that have come in in the last eight years or so. And, you know, when you, when you bring in a brand new program, it takes a little while for staff to learn it and learn it well and feel comfortable with it. We have a lot of these programs that, for those of you that have been around for a while, you know, you'll recognize names like Responsive Classroom and Teaching for Understanding, the Columbia Teachers College Reading and Writing and Phonics Units, the Eureka Math Modules. We've had a lot of things that we've put in place over the last eight years. And we were in many ways really heading towards a, a spot where I think teachers were becoming more comfortable with, with some of this deeper curriculum. We're heading for a spot where we want to encourage students to, you know, not just be able to kind of pare it back what we're teaching, but to really internalize it and to be able to transfer and apply their learning to new situations in and outside of class. And many of these initiatives were, were at the point where they were beginning to mature right before the pandemic. And, you know, we're really looking forward to a time when, you know, they all kind of gel together in a way where the, kind of the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. But, and you know, none of this is new, right? Departure, right? You know, we know where we're going. And the train has left the station on almost all of these, right? These, we, these are not new to our district. And, you know, when we start new initiatives, you know, we're very careful and very systematic about it. We choose carefully, you know? One of the most important things you can do is make sure you have the right initiative in the first place. And what we tend to do here is we, we seek a lot of stakeholder input. We have a lot of different task forces and steering committees that help us figure out where we want to go. And when we bring in something new, we often, we pilot it. Almost everything at Vessel starts as a pilot. That is a way of saying, you know, we usually begin small with a group of early adopters, people who are excited and enthusiastic about the initiative. And, you know, we work through things on a small scale. And part of why we do that is we want to make sure that those folks have a chance to give us feedback. And, and, you know, we gather data, we listen to folks, we try to learn from that feedback and incorporate it as we try to then eventually bring an initiative to scale. And so we have a number of initiatives here, you know? In the academic research on, on curriculum instructional change, you know? In the research literature, about two out of every three initiatives don't survive past the first three to five years of implementation. And I'm happy to say, oh, we have a much, much better success rate here at Vessel. We've had all of these initiatives that I had on the last screen are all things that, that, you know, have been prospering. And, you know, many of those are, are, you know, living in their, you know, fifth year and beyond. So we've started on the track already. But sometimes conditions change along the way, right? The storm blows in and we have to adapt. And, you know, I don't, I have not run into anybody at any level, either inside of the organization or outside, who said, you know, the past year is exactly the way we think schooling ought to go. I think we, we all know that we had to kind of adapt on the fly and make changes. This is the way it sometimes goes. But, you know, we're, we're at a point where we recognize there are some challenges. We recognize that schooling has been disrupted in some ways and we're looking to recover. And so as we think about some of these challenges, and there'll be more on this to come. Mr. Kassen and I, for right now, are working on a recovery plan that should come out on the district website. Hopefully sometime next week with more details. But as we look at this, this next phase, we have certain challenges. And, you know, one challenge is this idea of socialization and mental health. You know, we have students who have not been in class as many days over the past year and a quarter as they would in a normal year. We have other students who have been on full remote learning all year. You know, like all of us, you know, as you lack some of that social interaction, your social skills get rusty. And it can have an adverse impact on mental health. We realize going into the next year, that social, emotional learning and mental health are going to be really key things for us to pay attention to. And I'll talk in a little bit about some ways that we're hoping to address those. Number two, challenge number two, gaps in learning. And, you know, sometimes folks talk about learning loss. That's a phrase that's been going around a lot lately. I don't love that phrase because I, I do think that implies that students have actually gone backwards. I, I don't think in most cases that's been the case, but certainly students have missed out on some opportunities in the past year and a quarter. And, you know, we had ideas of what they would learn and in some cases, they probably didn't learn as much as they would in a regular year. Although I would argue that in some ways, a lot of students have learned other different things that are also good. As a parent, I will say, my kids learned how to cook this year, so I was pretty happy about that. But in any case, we know that we have some gaps that we've got to pay attention to. You know, those gaps can include content knowledge, right? As, as teachers have sometimes had to cut back on pieces of units on things that maybe were nice, but not as necessary. You know, because it, it takes longer to teach when you're working through Zoom. And when you've got, you know, remote students and hybrids and in-person stu- students in front of you at the same time. You know, so there are going to be spots where we're going to have to fill some gaps in terms of content. Skill gaps, definitely, we're going to have to address that. I think of science labs as a great example of this, you know? Students have just not had as much opportunity because of social distancing or remote learning. You get hands-on, you know, and working with things in the labs. Academic dispositions, that's another kind of gap that you don't hear people talk about very much, but I think it's an important one. You know, pre-pandemic, we were trying to emphasize with students that we want our students to become junior historians and scientists and mathematicians and readers and writers and linguists and all of these great things. And that involves very active learning. That involves them, again, having to think hard and, and transfer and apply their knowledge to new situations. But, you know, unfortunately, as we've had to adapt in the past year. As, you know, we've had some more teacher-centered learning. And sometimes I do worry that that may have influenced, in not such a great way, how students understand learning. And, you know, we're not here to just fill students up with, with knowledge. We're here to engage them as thinkers. So academic dispositions will be an important gap we need to think about moving forward. Equity is, is clearly been an issue in the last year and a quarter. You know, students have been impacted by the pandemic in all different ways. Most notably, students with disabilities, multilingual learners, students from low socioeconomic status households. These are some groups that have probably been particularly impacted. But certainly the pandemic has been unpredictable in its impact on lots of students. So it's not limited to these groups. But we need to think about, how do we help establish equity by making sure all these groups have what they need moving forward? And then lastly, this one, I will defer to Mr. Kassen a little bit because this is in the area of facilities. But in technology, Mr. Kassen, do you want to talk a little bit about number four?
Yeah, definitely. So obviously with field facilities, we're looking at different areas, HVAC being one of them. To make sure we have appropriate, you know, classroom and infrastructure for our students and staff. And then technological infrastructure maintenance upgrades. Obviously, the one-to-one program for technology, which is very important. And as we know, going into what we've learned from this year with Zoom, the technology is, does work. And as we are right now, using Zoom. And then what pieces of that do we need to use going forward? Has education changed where that instructional technology we need to upgrade and revamp and for that continuous improvement? So we have been meeting with Heather Pufke and her team to look at strategic planning in that regard. And one area is our one-to-one devices, our Promethean boards in our classrooms. And then also looking at our software, Matt Bechtel helps us out with the EdLaw two D. And looking to make sure that our rider and the information that we need on software with vendors when we purchase software that complies with state ed. And so together, we're looking at, at these areas and this is important for the next steps. And these are our challenges going forward in our education environment.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Kassen. So we, you know, we've been planning and we'll continue to plan to figure out how do we recover, right? There, again, conditions have changed, right? It isn't exactly the course we thought we'd be on. Sometimes you end up in a predicament. Hopefully it's not as bad as this guy's. But we're looking ahead to try to think about what this might look like. From an instructional point of view, as we think about recovery, I would argue for a strategy that involves three strands. A strand around enhancing human resources, a second one around gap closing curricula. And then a third around enrichment and intervention, which as I'll argue in a minute, folks often rigidly separate those two. I'd argue that the line between them these days is a little bit blurrier. So we'll talk about each of these in a little bit more detail in just a sec. So enhancing human resources, our organization is what it is because of the people that, that are part of it. You know, first way that we've tried to enhance human resources is the budget that was recently adopted and passed. Does include some additional positions in some strategic areas. One of those areas is in the area of elementary math intervention. As some of you know, you know, we have struggled a bit in the past year as we use some of our interventionists for remote learning. You know, we, and frankly, even before that, there's been a need for additional math interventionists. We know that our programs have done well with the curriculum that we currently have, the Eureka Math Modules. But we also know that in order for them to go to the next step, we've got to figure out how to help students who may not be at grade level to maximize their growth. And so having two additional math interventionists will help move us along that path. We've also added in one additional social worker into the new budget. This would be the second for the school district. Again, this is explicitly here to help address mental health and social, emotional learning challenges in the next year. So additional staffing. But beyond that, we are looking at investing in our people. We are looking at building the professional capital of our teachers and staff. We always do a fair amount of professional development, professional learning over the summer. This year, because of these federal funds, we do have the ability to run more of that than we would in a typical year. I'll, I'll spare you naming, you know, all, all of the initiatives here. But just to give you an idea how big this is. The professional development that's being offered has the potential to impact three hundred and eighty-three staff. Some of you will know, we don't have three hundred and eighty-three teachers in the district. So when I say that, I mean, that would be the total number of staff that could be involved in a given initiative. So some people would be involved in more than one initiative, others maybe none. And we would be looking at if all of this, if they all kind of follow this offer, three hundred and forty-four hours of professional learning over the summer, if you added it all together. So we've offered a lot. A lot of this has gone out to teachers already, but believe it or not, there are still initiatives that will be going out this week where we will be inviting people to attend. They're both homegrown initiatives that are being offered here by our own staff at Vessel and also through Brum Tyoga Bosse's. Some of the kind of clusters of initiatives that we are emphasizing this year in the area of social, emotional learning. We have a number of initiatives, including Responsive Classroom, levels one and two, which we have been offering for a few years, but we're continuing to try to get all of our elementary staff through that. It's a program that blends social, emotional learning with rigorous academics. And then also restorative practices at the high school, we're beginning to just dip our toe in the restorative practices water. We will be inviting some teachers to participate in some trainings through Brum Tyoga Bosse's in this area. Technology integration, last year, technology integration was the biggest push by far in professional learning. And in the past year, our faculty and staff have grown in leaps and bounds. I think a lot of us can remember when platforms like Zoom and Google Classroom or CSO were, you know, things that we were only vaguely familiar with if at all. That is not the case now. What we are looking to do with our tech integration, professional learning in the next stretch is to take it beyond just learning how to use platforms. There'll still be some of that. But really trying to help teachers figure out how to integrate this technology in smart ways into their instruction. So a couple of examples of this, we have a Smart Start Grant that we were able to receive along with a number of other districts in the Brum Tyoga Bosse's area. And that provides us the ability to train in computer, in digital literacy and computer science. Five primary teachers, five intermediate teachers and two middle school teachers. And that is, again, grant funded, so that's at no cost to our district because we were part of a grant with Bosse's. Also, Google Classroom for Equity is another initiative that's going to be going out to our teachers very soon. This is a good example of how, we're not just looking at the, how do you use a platform like Google Classroom. Now we're looking at, how do we use that for a particular purpose that aligns with our goals and deepens our instruction? Improving instruction, several, many, 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 too many to list. But Teaching for Understanding, we are offering the full four-day Teaching for Understanding course. This has been something we've been offering for a long time to our second-year teachers and they've done very well with it. But it's also a great model for veteran teachers. In some ways, it's actually even better suited for them. And so I'm excited to say, we are able to offer the four-day training to some veteran teachers. Again, we're looking to keep people growing, not just at the beginning of their career, but throughout their career. We know that our, our mid and later career faculty in a lot of ways are the engines of improvement. So Teaching for Understanding is a good example of that. Focus on Effective Teaching, we're offering to a few teachers, that's through Brum Tyoga Bosse's. We're also offering another session on rethinking assessment, really thinking about moving into project-based learning and authentic assessment and really going beyond just the sort of, beyond the bubble, beyond the standardized tests. Again, you know, trying to deepen practice. And then improving the intervention, that's, that's going to be a key area moving forward. We have invested in the Accelerating Literacy Program through Brum Tyoga Bosse's. This is not the first year that we've done that, but we expanded access to it. And so in the past, we focused on training our reading and special education teachers. This is a program that goes, it starts in the summer and goes throughout the year. It's a two-year program and it involves having a literacy coach housed part-time at Vessel from Brum Tyoga Bosse's. So this year, we're moving this model beyond just special education reading. And we're trying to bring in some of our primary teachers. Because we know areas like first grade and second grade, our current kindergarten and, and first grade, those, those students are going to need some additional help as they move into next year. So we're trying to make sure that we can get more staff trained in that area. It's a great program, gives teachers the ability to assess students, decide what they need and then differentiate appropriately. And then a number of other intervention areas. Sarah Evans, our district literacy specialist, is going to be offering a session on literacy assessment intervention locally. We are offering a session on co-teaching strategies for English as a New Language teachers, special education teachers and classroom teachers. Developed is the Vessel Liter- Early Literacy Profile, that committee will be meeting. Math fluency, Joan Poparak and the other math interventionists and specialists in the district are going to be working on this area as well. So a lot around intervention and much, much more, but these, this is some highlights. But enhancing human resources is a key, key part. But enhancing human resources is a key, key part to our strategy for recovery. Again, both adding resources and helping to develop the professional capital of the faculty and staff that we currently have. Gap closing curriculum is another area. Again, I talked about the idea that we're going to have some of these gaps in terms of content skills and dispositions. We have not waited on this one. We have started, we, we got off to a very active start this spring. Many departments are already having these conversations. In fact, most at the secondary level have. We've been doing data analyses, looking at universal screenings, star reading and math are two examples of that, but we have many others. I will tell you that looking closely at our mid-year screenings, I wasn't sure what to expect. I wasn't sure if it would see us kind of hemorrhaging. We did not see that so far. And that's, that's good news. When we look at the students where they were mid-year this year compared to last year, the curves look very similar. We do see some areas where there is an extra need. That we see more students that would be, if you were thinking of a state exam, they might have been a low three, now they're a high two. Nothing you can't work with, but we do see some, some gaps that are, that we can address surgically. So we have been looking at that data closely. We've been doing tag-off meetings, especially at the secondary level, particularly for subject areas that are very sequential, you know, and I mean areas like math and world languages where, you know, you've got to know one topic well in order to understand the next topic that's coming down. And so those are areas where gaps are particularly urgent. So Kelly Mazikowicz, one of our directors of instruction, has been working with Paul Volkardt and Cody Ostrahout, two math specialists at Brim Tyoga Bosse's. And our teachers in fifth grade and in the middle school and in the high school. We've had conversations between grade levels. So fifth and grade and sixth grade, for example, met together and talked about, okay, coming out of fifth, what are some things that we didn't spend as much time on? What are some things where we think you may have to add in a little bit in sixth grade? Sixth and seventh have met, seventh and eighth, eighth and ninth have met. And we've had these conversations again across secondary departments. I got to give our teachers a lot of credit. Some of them had started this conversation even before we got involved as an administration. There are some really smart things going on. I think another great example of this would be high school math, you know. Our geometry teachers, you know, the geometry region wasn't given this year. That created some opportunities, right? As our geometry teacher said, hey, there are some things in this curriculum that are here only because they show up in geometry, but they're not really necessary for accessing the next level of Algebra II or pre-calculus or calculus. And so instead of spending a lot of time on some of those topics, we can shift gears and just emphasize topics that are going to be more important for students as they move into Algebra II. So that work has already happened and we're hoping to send students in this summer well-prepared. Math specialists, they're going, as I mentioned before, they're doing a lot of work this summer, both professional learning and curriculum development. And again, I already mentioned that we are working with Bosse specialists in math and in science. Marine Smith is the science specialist at Bosse. So these folks have expertise that we don't necessarily have in-house, they're specialists, and so they've been able to work with our teachers and administrators to make sure that we have good, solid plans going forward. Lots of curriculum work going this summer, 173 staff involved, 235 hours total. Again, some of that is staff involved in more than one thing. If you want to group the curriculum work into a couple of different kind of areas, one would be standards work. We have new standards in almost every core area. New state standards, just this year, the World Language Learning Standards came out just this spring, for example. But we've also had other ones like Next Generation ELA and MAP and the New York State Learning Standards in Science. These are things we were working on pre-pandemic or we're headed towards. We got to get back into that now. That, you know, we're looking to move past the disruptions of the pandemic. Enriched courses, Social Studies seven and eight are developing enriched courses to offer this fall for the first time. This will replace the accelerated course in eighth grade where they would take Global History and Geography early. This is an opportunity again to get kids excited, to go deeper in areas where they have interest, to help them read and write at deeper levels. And then electives, we have some new electives in business. We have some that need to be revamped that were offered for the first time this past year, but this past year wasn't like other years, so we need to look at that. Others in the, say, the music department, for example, we're offering a music and media elective taught by Austin Kylie High School, really excited about that one. So we've got a lot of curriculum work going on. Some of it to deal with gaps, others to kind of keep us moving forward. And then lastly, enrichment and intervention. I would argue that, I have argued that enrichment and intervention, we often see them separately, but they're not quite as separate as sometimes we think. What we want is for students to become resilient. And if you look at the research on resiliency, the key to resilience is A, helping students through learning challenges. Of course, that's part of it, but it's not just that. It's not just about working on the things that you struggle with. It's also about building up their assets, building up the things that they're good at, that they're excited about, the things that give them a reason to come to school. And so we think as we talk about enrichment, we talk about enrichment and intervention together as two things that are intimately related. We'll hear more about that, I'm sure, in the coming months and years. One thing that is on the horizon, you will see this sometime later this summer, maybe late July, early August. We will be coming out with a brand-new comprehensive student support plan. We used to call this the RTI Plan, so it'll have a new name. And it is substantially rewritten. We've had groups that have been working on this, our, our student support steering committees for elementary and secondary have been working hard for actually about two years on this project. It slowed us down a little bit during the pandemic, but we've come back to it. We met last week. They, we were going to do some more revisions to our draft, but we hope to have that to you soon. Really excited about that one. And then of course, summer enrichment. We've got elementary summer enrichment is moving forward. I know folks are anxious that applied for this to find out if they got in. I'm happy to say everybody who requested to be part of elementary summer enrichment is going to be part of the program. Our teachers stepped up. We have enough sections to be able to accommodate folks. And we were able to grant at the primary level. If people wanted two weeks, they were able to get two weeks. And I believe almost everyone was able to get their, either their first or second choice in terms of the dates. There may be a few that got their third choice. We did our best. So letters for that are going to be going out hopefully tomorrow. And we're going to be moving forward with that one beginning on July 6th. Secondary summer enrichment, more on this soon. We did create a system for secondary teachers to propose enrichment activities over the summer in, you know, four-day chunks. We're going to be looking to do this in August. We did have, I, last time I checked, about 10 teachers had offered proposals. So we're going to be looking to get more information on that out to, for students to register soon. And then lastly here, summer, summer music lessons. Want to talk about learning loss? If you were in a musical ensemble, it was tough to play together in this past year because of the social distancing and COVID restrictions. So we understand that the arts are on par with all the other subject areas. We were able to come up with summer music lessons. This was the brainchild of our department chair for music, Greg Harris, made this proposal. So we're excited about that one. That is also going to be moving forward soon, I think, before the end of this week. And with that, I will stop my share and take any questions that you might have.
All right.
No questions?
Yeah, could you repeat it, Patrick? I didn't.
On behalf of Tony, well, I'm sure we'll come back to all of these things in future sessions.
Very good. It was very good.
All right.
Now, yeah, there's a lot of material that was covered here and we'll cover a lot of it again during the board retreat as, as we firm up more of the plans. So.
Thank you, Ms.
All I can say is, you know, Patrick, it looks like you're kind of a little bit lazy kind of coming into this program. I'm really not very enthusiastic about it. You know, your enthusiasm, all right?
Trying to hit the ground running. What can I say?
Hey, Ted, I have a quick question. One of your initial points is talking about making use of more task forces and steering committees. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on what the makeup of those committees should be and how you go about making the, the membership of those committees.
Sure, that's a good question. It depends on the committee, is sort of the short answer. There are some committees out there that, for example, District Planning Committee, where there are in regulations and things that say, you know, you've got to have certain bargaining units represented, that sort of thing. But generally speaking, we go out of our way to try to bring in people with all different perspectives. I'm not just interested in hearing from people who are, you know, are super gung ho about a given initiative. We want to hear from everybody. I've learned from experience that sometimes the folks that are a little more reticent are actually seeing things that we need to pay attention to and they, they make our ultimate implementation a lot stronger. And occasionally we pilot something and we look at it and we say, hey, this would have been a mistake. Let's not move forward with it. You know, we've been known to do that as well, you know, because you certainly don't want to make the mistake of going down the wrong path. So, you know, we, we try to make sure it's as diverse as possible.
Any, any other questions? Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Clark, and look forward to hearing more about these plans as we move forward. So next, we have updates on our graduation plans and we have asked Ms. Young to, to join us. Don, if you want to give an update on the graduation plans for this Saturday, we're all waiting to hear what's, what's going to take place. So.
Sure. So we were excitedly announcing last week that a lot of those restrictions of, you know, collecting information about who was vetted to be cleared to attend have all been lifted. So as a result of that, we are inviting all of our graduates to invite up to 10 guests to join us at graduation on Saturday morning at Dick Hoover Stadium. Starting at 9:00 AM, the ceremony will begin. The graduates will be processing in, in their graduation regalia. They will be sitting on the track and the families will be seated in the bleachers. We are asking that families social distance from other families because we are not doing separate sections for vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Unvaccinated people should continue to wear masks in this opportunity, but we will not be collecting or vetting that information. So that really is up to individuals to maintain that for the safety and comfort of other people around them. We no longer are requiring tickets or are kind of checking people in, so that, that kind of relieves us a lot from having a lot of personnel that need to be there. We are planning on a beautifully sunny day, but not too hot in those black, black robes. But so far, the weather forecast looks beautiful. I keep praying for heavy rain today, tomorrow, and then it stops. So that's what we're looking forward to. We are having a graduation rehearsal on Friday at 1:00 in the afternoon. So the students will be coming in, will be staging in the auditorium, kind of setting up and giving them some instructions about how things will work. So hopefully they will get the message to wear comfortable shoes because they will be processing from the school down along the track. And I know some of our students, they like to get dressed up, but we don't want anybody twisting an ankle as they go through that. We have also sent out some messaging that if there's a parent that is a staff member in the Vestal Central School District and they would like to present their diploma to their graduate, they should reach out to either myself on my email or Dr. Blaine at his email so that we can make sure that we include those individuals. And we have had several teachers that are really excited about having the opportunity to present that after 12 years here in the Vestal School District. So we've got some, some great things going on. We do have our student speaker ready to go. Our valedictorian will be making a speech as well. And again, we're just hoping for a really awesome day for our seniors. Car parade is looking great for Friday night. I know some people were asking, yes, 5 o'clock is the start of that. Bring cowbells, noisemakers, line the streets. Families are encouraged to line the front street. Any staff members that want to celebrate former students, feel free to kind of line through the Vestal High School campus. We will be doing some prizes for random cars as they come through with gift certificates and some other things, just to kind of have some fun send-off. And Mr. Gannon will also be there to announce each senior as they come through at the end of the parade route. So it's, I think it's going to be a great town celebration of our youth.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions from the board members? John.
In terms of board participation, is all board members invited?
To the grad, board members are invited. I, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but the staging area is set up for, for the board president. Other board members would be in the, in the stands themselves?
That's correct.
So, and the reason, big reason for is the stage area is so small that you can't sit too many people on there. So.
Are the other board members just normal?
No, Don, were robes ordered for the board members or is the plan to go with just a personal dress?
The, there is a robe for Mario as the board president, who's part of the ceremony, but other board members would just do regular dress for graduation.
Oh, man, I have robes.
Well, you can certainly choose to wear them if you have them at home. That's your personal preference, Mark.
Is that from your Dungeons Dragons days there, Mark?
Well, actually, I have to wear them every year as part of my job for graduation. So I, you know, usually double dip and use them for both. It's really, it's usually pretty hot, but I usually don't mind wearing it because, I don't know. It looks kind of neat.
Yeah. Part of the reason that we didn't plan for ordering those robes far in advance is because at the time, we would have had to order them for all of the board members. We still were operating under very limited attendance there. So we are happy to open that up to anyone who would like to attend. But unfortunately, we just, you know, didn't shift gears earlier enough with the state to be able to include more people in the actual ceremony and procession.
Yeah.
And then last question, aside from those who was requested to present the performance, are the rest of the students just picking them up off a table or is it?
I don't know if you could hear that, Don, but how?
I can't hear anything.
Okay, how are the students being presented the diplomas themselves? Are they just picking them up at a table or is somebody presenting them to them?
They, they will be announced just like they were last year, one at a time, walk across the stage, have the opportunity to stop, look at the crowd, wave if they would like to to their families, and then they'll continue to a table and receive their diploma like they have in the past.
Now, for the parents and the faculty staff that wanted to hand out those diplomas, will they be at that table to be able to hand them to their, to their child?
Yes, we need to know if they're planning to do that so that we can make sure they have the information. Dr. Blaine will be sending out some information to those parents who have requested to do that, so they know when to come down and be available there.
Okay, so we have two board members, right? Mark and John. Do we have any other board members that will be handing out?
I think Mrs. Young is well aware that I'm looking forward to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think John and Mark are both on Andy's list already. So I think they're good unless there's someone else that we've missed from the board.
Okay, I don't see any hands, but if, if anything does come up, please reach out to, to the high school and let them know.
Can I ask what other board members plan on being present, just present?
I don't know if everybody heard that, but how many board members plan on being present on Saturday for the ceremonies? I've got John, Mark, Mario. Okay, we have three. So.
One last question, will the vessel voices be performing?
Will the vessel voices be performing, Don?
Uh, that's a good question. I know that the, the band is performing. Uh, that's a good question, I know that the, the band is performing, I'll have to check on that.
Okay. Let, if you would, let the district clerk know, and she can share that information with all the, all the board members.
Sure.
All right. All right, any, any other questions?
If, if Dawn pulls off perfect weather again, as she did on prom, I might, I might have to consult her for some private, private family.
Yeah, she could, she could be busy with all that. Okay, that completing the question, that completes the, well, one other thing, Don, I'm going to turn it back over to, for an introduction. Cliff, if you would let our next person in, the board will have an action item tonight in the, the yips and nips, and I will turn it over to Don to introduce our assistant principal at the high school.
Yeah, so I'm very excited to introduce you all to Jennifer Bittler, who is going to be our new assistant principal at the high school. She will beginning, be beginning that position on July 1st. She's coming to us from Union Endicott, shh, we have to change all her colors. But she has been there for 20 years, so it may take some time to build up that spirit wear for her. She's been in education for 20 years in many different roles, an elementary teacher, a literacy collaborative coordinator and coach, she's led professional development. And most recently, as she's transitioning into administration, she's worked with my colleague, Principal Di Stefano, over at Union Endicott High School, so she has a bird's eye view of what it's like for the, the busyness of a high school. And I have to say, you know, her, her presence at the interviews really was just awesome, that she is so excited to work with high school students, which we are excited about, because we do have the best high school in this entire region. So Jennifer, I'm, I'm just going to welcome you, and if you would like to say anything, feel free to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much, please don't hold it against me, I promise to build up my green and gold as quickly as possible. I am married to a Vestal grad, so we do have a lot of green already in our wardrobe, we even have a Vestal room in our basement. So I've already been prepared and prepped, and I'm ready to go. But I just wanted to say that it's just been a real pleasure hearing and seeing all of you tonight, and seeing the happenings going on in the district, and I'm just really honored and thrilled to be joining this Vestal team, I really am. I look forward to serving in any capacity and working with the students, the families, the staff, administration, the Board of Ed, and, and everyone, and I actually look forward to meeting you all in person, watching you over Zoom has been a little tricky, but I've tried to gain as much insight as I can, I just thank you for this opportunity, I'm super excited.
Well, good, good, thank you, Jennifer, and we look forward to you joining the ranks here, so.
And welcome aboard, Jennifer, we got a room downstairs where we can get your, your green and gold blood transfusion taken care of, and it'll all be set up for you down there, all right?
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Don, and that completes the superintendent reports, I'll turn it back over to the president.
All right, on that note, oh, I'm sorry, just one last thing to, to, to share with the board members who are going to be attending the, the parade. I, I have a building on Front Street, you're all welcome to come and park your vehicles over there in my parking lot, if, if you choose to do so, and if you just need to know where it's at, just let me know, and I'll, I'll give you all the information. And so with that, if I can move on to new business, can I have a motion to accept schedules A, B, C, F, and P? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The schedules are approved. Onto new business, resolution one, services agreement for extended day program at Ross Corners Christian Academy, can I have a motion to accept, a, a motion for the resolution? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution two, transportation contract with, with a parent, can I have a, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's approved. Resolution three, transportation contract with parent, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's approved. Resolution four, bid award, work uniforms 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's approved. Resolution five, bid award, milk, milk products 2021, 22, John, Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, motion's approved. Resolution six, bid award, ice cream products 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? John, Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's approved. Resolution seven, bid award, red products 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, motion is approved. Resolution eight, bid award, snack items 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those abstained, motion's approved. Resolution nine, bid award, meat and cheese products, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Resolution 10, bid award, grocery products 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? John, Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Resolution 11, bid award, paper products, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's approved. Resolution 12, bid award, small wares 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? John, Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution 13, bid award, breakfast breaks 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution 14, licensing, software licensing agreements, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution 15, acceptance of grants to the Vestal, BEHPTA, Vestal Hills, there we go, yeah. Christina and John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution 16, revised UPK agreement 2021, 22, Cup Care Children Center, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion is approved. Resolution 17, revised UPK agreement 2021, 22, Jewish Community Center, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Resolution 18, initial AS-7 for BOSI's services 2021, 22, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, opposed, motion's approved. Resolution 19, contract with IBI Group, AHRAS six month inspection, can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Resolution 20, authorized use of funding of reserves, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Resolution 21, group sponsored Medicare Advantage Agreement, can I have a motion, please? John and Christina, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. And now, we move on to the voice of the public. Hey, John and Christina, that was really heroic on your, on your end. You guys did a great job, thank you for, thank you for the support, you know, I don't know where you guys were, all this, all these other times, you know, but you know, you guys really kind of stepped up on this one, thank you. Hey Cliff, what you got for us this evening?
Yeah, so we have Sherri Handmaker, she has her hand up, so I'll move her into as a panelist. Hello Sherri, can you hear us okay? Your mute is still on if you're talking.
Okay.
Okay, so you have three minutes?
Okay, yes, um, I just was wondering, I had sent a video to the board. I know Mark Browning got back to me that he was able to watch that regarding some of the risks with masking the children, so I didn't know if any board members were able to watch that, if they could just let me know. And the other quick thing, I just wondered if there was possibility that you would consider making the mask optional for the summer program, with it being, you know, right in the middle of July and the heat, the kids will be at the Taya Hills School. So that's just a thought to think about, and forgive me if you guys covered some of that, it came in late to the, to the board meeting, so if you had already talked about that, I'm sorry. But I think that's, that's all for now, and we're looking forward to the information coming out soon from, like, exactly the, you know, the dates and times and what they're doing for the summer enrichment program. So I know they said that was planning to be out today, so, yeah. Think that's, that's probably all, and we're, we're looking forward to a good summer and just some of that happening, and thank you for offering that. I've, I've heard that there's about 200 kids, at least in the elementary, that are doing that, so I, I think it was a great need that was met, so we really appreciate that. So.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yep.
So have you anyone else, Cliff?
Yes, let me just, I'm trying to, hmm, I'm trying to move Sherri back to the attendees, and I'm not seeing where I can do that.
Do you want me to just leave?
I think, here, I can move you back, so you can still stay on, all right?
Okay.
There you go, okay? Thank you. There, that worked, okay. And at this point, I do not see any other hands raised, we do have four, five, six, so we have eight individuals in attendees, but there are no hands raised.
All right, and so on that note, we will be moving on to future board meetings, the next, the, the next scheduled meeting, the only scheduled meeting that we have, is going to be the, the first meeting of the, the coming school year, and that will be Tuesday, July 6th, that's the reorganizational meeting, we'll be meeting at the board conference, and we'll also be doing it via Zoom, we still haven't had any changes to, to how, how we're meeting at this point in time, and so Zoom meetings are still, you know, one of the, you know, the, the, one of the more effective ways, I guess, for us all to be able to get together, and it'll continue to be streaming through YouTube, and that's where we'll be going over all the, the issues, I'm sorry, the appointments for, for the coming year. Okay, and so we will be finalizing the board calendar for the coming year also, so we'll have a full schedule for all the meetings that will be occurring over the course of next year. And from there, can I have a motion to adjourn into anticipated executive session to review the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Education, negotiations, and the superintendent review?
And a legal.
And a legal update. Can I have a motion, please? Christina and John, questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, we are now adjourned into executive session. Hey, thank you, folks.
Your arm should be tired.